These lights in here are not most flattering. You've never seen yourself on TV?
I try not to look. I prefer to laugh at York County's school board. This is my big show on Friday night, York County's School Board Repeals.
And I want to say hello to them. It's just we've set us down. We've set up a new...
Yeah.
I'd like to call the Pecosin School Board September meeting to order. Sophie?
Cassidy Sparul, a junior at Pecosin High School, will lead the pledge to the flag. She is a member of Pecosin's jazz choir and symphonic band. She hopes to one day go to Virginia Commonwealth University to major in radiation therapy.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Molly Giffen, a senior at Pecosin High School, will give the inspirational reading. Molly plans to pursue a career in law after graduation. Her inspirational reading is "Hope Is The Thing With Feathers" by Emily Dickinson.
Hope is the thing with the feathers that perches in the soul and sings the tune without the words and never stops at all. And sweetest in the gale is heard and sore must be the storm that could abash the little bird that kept so many warm. I've heard it in the childish land and on the strangest sea, yet never in extremity it asked a crumb of me. Thank you.
Next up is a presentation by the Pecosin High School Jazz Choir, and they will be performing a festive madrigal by Donald Moore. And students, if you could wait for just a few minutes after that, we're going to take a short intermission. We'd like to come out and speak with you. Mr. Bumball?
Gather folk and all acquaintance, come and sing the night away. Gather round and sing the chorus, sing we now this festive day. Come you merry lads and glasses, joyous may your singing be. Join us all in celebration, sing we now this festive day. Fa la la la, fa la la la, fa la la, fa la la la. Join us all in celebration, sing we now this festive day. Fa la la la, fa la la la, fa la la, fa la la la. Join us all in celebration, sing we now this festive day. As we gather here together with the song of glee and burt, sing we now good friends with pleasure, singing songs of peace on earth. Fa la la la, fa la la la, fa la la, fa la la la. Join us all in celebration, sing we now this festive day. Fa la la la, fa la la la, fa la la, fa la la la. Join us all in celebration, sing we now this festive day. Sing we now this festive day. Fa la la la, fa la la la.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bumball. As usual, you do a fine job, sir. Thank you very much for your work with students. It's always a pleasure to hear a performance from any of your choirs. Thank you. Next, do we have any additions and/or modifications to the agenda?
We actually do have a modification to the agenda. We would like to do a recognition this evening that is not on our agenda because we wanted to surprise somebody. So if Mrs. Pat McDowell could please go to the podium with Dr. Carter. For those of you in the audience who do not know, she is retiring at the end of this month and has been with us for 15 years. And I can't say enough about what she's done for the school division, what she's done for the school board, what she's done for me personally since I've been here for the past six years, and how much we will miss her. We will be recognizing her at another function in the future, but we wanted to do it on camera since she's been sitting up here with us for a very long time helping keep us straight at our school board meetings. And I don't know, Dr. Carter, if you want to add anything.
Well, it's just been a pleasure. If something's supposed to be there when you turn around, it's there. Not only is it there, it's 100% accurate, and you just do amazing work. And I really want to thank you for that. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. This is... I have to be speechless. And that's rare. And now we'll go ahead and move to the intermission.
Do you introduce the purpose?
He does. I mean, both houses are cool. But for this...
Alan and David are sitting here.
You both look very dashing today.
There was three of us, so which one?
I've already spoken to Mr. Hux.
Okay, next up, we'll have our presentations and reports. First, Mr. Bowen with the financial update.
Good evening, Dr. Carter, school board members, and Dr. Parrish. I'd like to begin the finance update this evening with a bit of good news. It's been reported that the governor and key members of the General Assembly have reached an agreement on the budget shortfall, and that agreement includes protecting K-12 funding for this fiscal year. There's still a budget gap that needs to be closed for 2016. It's roughly $270 million. And it's our understanding that those budget strategies or reduction strategies will be addressed in the governor's budget, proposed budget that comes out in December and in the upcoming General Assembly session. So that's good news for us for fiscal year 15. Let me move into some data. And as you know, the Department of Education released testing and accreditation data this morning, and I believe Dr. Colley is going to share lots of information with the board this evening on that data. But there was one item that I wanted to share with you, and it was data on instructional spending. And let me begin by giving you a bit of background. Here we go. In 2012, the General Assembly passed a legislation that established a benchmark for instructional spending. Now, this benchmark was 65%. It's commonly referred to as the 65% rule. And the intent of this legislation was to require school divisions to spend 65% of their budget on instruction. What happened in the legislation is that in the final form, it was not required of school divisions to spend this money, but it was only as a benchmark and as a guide. Also included in this legislation was the authorization for VDOE, the Department of Education, to define instructional expenses. Now, the reason why this was important to us at the time is because there was a number of folks who were trying to push for the more restrictive federal definition of instruction. And those items excluded key parts of instructional expenditures, mainly salaries for principals and assistant principals, and expenses for our guidance counselors. However, in the end, VDOE did define their own instructional expenses or adopted their own instructional expenses. Now, the data used to determine the percentage of instructional spending comes from the Comprehensive Annual School Financial Report. And this is a report that every school division has to submit to VDOE. And how this information is gathered is we take our end-of-year financial report, and we break that down and put it in a format prescribed by Department of Education. And then, once that information is submitted to VDOE, then they spend the next six, eight, nine months accumulating that information and aggregating the data, and then they'll release it at the prescribed moment. And that release date was today. Move on to this next slide. This next slide shows the percentage of instructional spending for PCPS since VDO began reporting the data. And again, the data, the most recent data we have is for FY 2013. The 2014 data, my staff and I are currently working on, and we'll submit that to VDOE at the end of the month, and that won't be released. 2014 instructional data won't be released until this time next year. Excuse me, next year. But as you can see, since the release of this data, instructional spending for PCPS has increased every year. And it's important to note that when this legislation was passed, requiring 65% as a benchmark, it was done so in a time when school divisions were experiencing significant budget reductions. And as we moved into budget reductions during this time, one of our tight priorities has been to protect instruction. And I believe that this data reflects that priority. And to give you an idea, just on the range of instructional spending, the percentage with school divisions in Virginia, the lowest percentage reported by a school was 50.2% and the highest being 73.2%. So Pecosin, at 69.1% for 2013, I think shows that we're doing a really good job, and we have our priorities set for instruction. And that concludes my report this evening.
Thank you. Does anybody have questions, comments there?
I guess I do. I'm assuming that buildings and buses and those types of things are not instructional spending, then?
That's correct. Custodial facilities, maintenance, administration, the school board office, all those items are excluded from instruction.
Anybody else? Thank you, sir. And next up, we'll have the operations update from Mr. Papas.
Good evening, school board, Chairman Carter, Dr. Parrish. In the area of maintenance, the outdoor classroom at Pecosin Elementary School, which was funded through a grant, has been completed. If you haven't seen it, you should go see it. It's quite beautiful, and I know that Dr. Wood and her people and students are going to enjoy that very much. In the area of safety, much is driven by code. And pursuant to code, all schools are completing a weekly fire drill for the first month of school. Additionally, code requires that each school provide an opportunity for a bus evacuation drill and a lockdown drill within the first 30 days of school. And lastly, all schools and the division are working to complete the mandated annual school safety survey. In the area of food service, we are using our food service management software in combination with our parent outreach software to, for the first time ever, assist parents in providing early notification of when a student's meal plan balance is in jeopardy or has gone into the negative. Currently, or prior to the institution of this, only parents that participated in the optional My School Bucks program received assistance in managing their student's meal accounts. Us doing so has reduced the work burden for school office staff as well as aided in lowering the lunch monies borrowed from the school system. In the area of transportation, to assist passenger car drivers in understanding when they must yield to buses that are offloading or unloading students, both PCPS and the city have added detailed graphic information to their respective public service stations. PCPS also has this information on the division's website under Transportation where it can be studied at greater length. As you know, PCPS was able to use grant funds to add radios to our transportation and school communications capabilities. The use of these radios, the inception, was at the start of school. And I can assure you that having these radios has definitely assisted us in making communications with all schools, bus drivers, and administration instantaneous. This tool has been met with incredible enthusiasm and appreciation by office staff and driver alike. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any questions there? Comments? Thank you very much, Mr. Papas. And next up, Dr. Colley with the instructional update.
Good evening, Dr. Carter, Dr. Parrish, members of the board. I'll remind you that some months, I'm very brief up here, and tonight, I'm wearing a couple of my different hats, so I've got different updates for you. So I'm going to start tonight with an instructional update and then move into some human resources updates. Last month, I briefly mentioned that I would be presenting state and federal accountability data tonight. And as it has been in the past, state accreditation is based on our overall achievement in English, math, science, and history, as well as in our high school graduation and completion. Today, the Virginia Department of Education released the 2014-15 state accreditation ratings and federal accountability reports, including naming priority and focus schools for improvement. At the same time, the school division and state report cards were updated, so they're all active online now. This slide is up here this evening. Just to remind you that we had a few changes in the last couple of years with our SOL administration. And the spring 2014 SOL administration was the third time that our students had seen the new math tests, and the second time our students had seen new reading, writing, and science tests. And I'll remind you that this was all online administration, that these were the new standards with increased rigor in both the standards and the testing, and that each test had between 10 and 15% of the technology-enhanced items for the students to work with, all in an effort of our state to make sure that our students are able to learn and demonstrate critical thinking, problem-solving skills across all of these content areas. The state also sent, set, excuse me, benchmark pass rates, and from year to year, we have these divided up separately. Next year, you probably won't see them separate because we've all reached the same benchmark. We're at the high benchmark of 75 in all grades for English and 70% in all grades for math, science, and history, with the graduate completer index at 85. And of course, what you're waiting for is the snapshot of our school division. And out of the 132 school divisions in the state of Virginia, I'm very happy this evening to report that Pecosin City Public Schools is one of 22 divisions that have all schools fully accredited by the state of Virginia, and we should be really proud of that accomplishment. Federal designations for Pecosin schools are also based on achievement on SOL tests, but they're geared to subgroup performance as well as total student performance. The state set the annual measurable objectives, or AMOs, for multiple subgroups in SOL test participation and performance in both English and math. And as we now talk a little bit about this federal system, it's important to note that the Virginia Department of Education can adjust these federal AMOs each year. The AMO rate will continue to rise over the next few years. And starting with the reports that were issued today, 2014-15, we will have AMO higher expectations values as well. So we will be recognized if we meet not minimums but higher expectations by either maintaining or raising prior year's pass rates and by already exceeding the six-year pass rate and making continuous improvement. So that you can fully appreciate all of these objectives, I've provided AMO information for you tonight by the numbers to start. So we have 156 AMOs in Pecosin City Public Schools to keep track of and to measure. Pecosin City Public Schools as a whole met all 45 AMOs, and in 11 of those, we met higher expectations. Pecosin High School met all 43 AMOs, and you'll remember, just like state, federal accountability includes graduation index, and that's why the high school has more AMOs. And in seven of those, we met higher expectations at the high school. At the middle school, we met 35 of 36 AMOs. The one we missed is listed as students who are economically disadvantaged in their math performance. And I will note that of that group, if we had half a student pass that test, we would have met the AMO. So we were very, very close to meeting that AMO. And because the middle school had four objectives where they met higher expectations. At the elementary school, we met 31 of 32 AMOs. The one we missed was students with disabilities, performance in math, and that pass rate was a narrow miss as well. About three and a half students passing that would have made the difference between us making the AMO and not making the AMO. And like the middle school, the elementary school also had objectives that met higher expectations. They had six. And I will go into a little bit further detail during our work session about, so what does all this mean? What are we doing? How are we moving forward? And I know I've gone over a lot of numbers really quickly, so what does this mean? Let me share the highlights. In Pecosin, in English, we take seven English and reading tests. Five had higher pass rates than the last year, and our highest pass rate was a 99%. The pass rate for all Pecosin City Public School students for English reading increased overall by 4%. In mathematics, the pass rate for all students in all math classes increased by 5%, and some schools had rates increase as much as 20% for pass or pass advance in mathematics. So what's the bottom line? Pecosin City Public Schools are fully accredited by the state of Virginia. While we missed two federal AMOs, of the 156 we're measured in, we also had 28 where we met higher expectations. We will continue to focus on good instruction and critical thinking as we make needed improvements, and we will also take time to focus on and continue what is working well in our instructional program. Now, I'll take a moment and switch over to another area of responsibility for me, and that is human resources. And I'll update you on our strategic plan in one of those areas. As you know, we built the strategic plan around several goal areas. Goal three is high-quality employee development. One objective for this goal is that Pecosin City Public Schools will provide benefits and salaries that will assist in the retention of high-quality faculty and staff. The indicator that will demonstrate our success in this goal is to increase our ranking in terms of teacher pay among the Peninsula Schools for both starting and mid-level teachers. And our baseline data from last spring has us ranked as seven out of seven for the Peninsula School Divisions. Tonight, I want you to know about our action step that's related to this goal, and that is to conduct a thorough classification and compensation study, and we will be beginning that in the next few weeks. And that concludes both my instructional and human resources updates this evening. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have now, and I'm certainly prepared to answer questions during the work session as we dig a little deeper into the data as well. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Questions?
Yeah, Dan. For those tests where we scored above the average we were supposed, well, the baseline, am I correct in understanding that next year, we will have to maintain that or go higher?
Yes and no. They can't hurt us. Remember last year when we talked about the maintain higher expectations and the no-backsliding? The state really responded to our hue and cry when we said, hey, wait a minute, we're way above these minimum expectations. So what they decided this year is, as I sort of highlighted, they can make us look good, and we're able to take the credit for meeting expectations and then going above and meeting a higher expectation. But say, should we only meet the benchmark next year, we won't be penalized for that. We'll still have met the AMO, and that's a good question. It's different from last year where they were telling us if we backslid, there would be a problem, and that's not going to hurt us.
But we can anticipate that the AMOs, the targets, will continue to increase each year. So they keep moving the benchmark higher, so...
Right, they're moving, they're all moving over six years, right? Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes, sir. Were there any other... Were there any other school divisions on the Peninsula that all the schools were accredited?
Yes, I believe...
Williamsburg, James City County, and York County, I believe, were.
Three.
There's three.
And how many school divisions are there in Virginia?
132.
Thank you.
With 22 making full accreditation.
Anybody else?
Oh.
I'll go back.
Ma'am, you're fine. I can take a hint. Thank you very much. Mr. Cass, would you run us through the consent agenda, please?
Yes, the consent agenda tonight consists of the following five items. There's a reading file for you. Approval of minutes of August regular meeting and work sessions, approval of financial reports, approval of personnel action, authorization to dispose of surplus property, authorization to change appropriation and coordinates with attached request.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Ms. McDowell, could you call for a vote, please?
Ms. Rollins?
Aye.
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Ms. Sidner?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Mr. Cass?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
The motion passed by a vote of six to one.
Thank you, ma'am. And other matters for consideration. First up, consideration of approval of the mileage reimbursement rate for PCPS employees who use personal vehicles for official business. And there was a reading file there. Dr. Parrish?
Yes, we brought this back to you this month because we needed to do some research for you as to what the city did with their mileage reimbursement rate. We did do that research, and they do follow what the state follows, which is what, which follows what the IRS does. So our recommendation to you to increase our reimbursement rate to 56 cents per mile matches the IRS rate, which is exactly what the city does as well. So we're bringing to you the same reimbursement rate that the city of Pecoson uses. Just as a reminder, we've been using the 40 cents a mile, but I believe it's time for us to increase it to the IRS rate. And again, we mentioned last month that we do have school division cars, so most often employees are using those cars, which actually keep our costs down as well. But with that said, I'm recommending approval of the reimbursement rate for personal vehicle use at 56 cents a mile.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the new mileage reimbursement rate?
So moved.
And the second?
Second.
Any questions there, comments? Thank you for checking on that.
You're welcome.
Ms. McDowell, could you call for a vote, please?
Ms. Rollins?
Aye.
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Ms. Sidner?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Mr. Cass?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
The motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. Next up, consideration of approval of the second reading of Change to Policy Manual, Section Two, Article Four, Facilities. Dr. Parrish?
Yes, we brought this to you in first reading last month. We really are updating this policy as a result of the change in Virginia law, which requires outside groups who use our facilities to ensure they follow either our concussion policy or that of the Virginia Department of Education. So as a result of that, we've made some recommended changes to the policy. Please note that in your reading file, I noted the fact that we actually had made one change about reporting a facility usage to you, pulled it out, I've put it back in. So you now have that as part of the policy. So with that said, I'm recommending approval of the revision of Policy 2-4.1, Community Use of School Facilities.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve use of school facilities?
So moved.
And the second?
Second.
Any questions, comments there? Pretty straightforward. Thank you. Ms. McDowell, could you call for a vote, please?
Ms. Rollins?
Aye.
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Ms. Sidner?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Mr. Cass?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
The motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. Next, consideration of approval of first reading and move to second reading Change to Policy Manual, Section 7-2.2, Admissions.
Yes, we're bringing this forward to you this night, tonight. As you know, we do allow our employees who do not live in the city of Pecoson to bring their children to our schools. As we talked this evening about the strategic plan and retaining high-quality employees, this is a benefit that we are able to provide our employees. What has come to our attention is we do have employees who have stepchildren who are living in the house, residing with them full-time, that they would like to bring to the school division, and we believe that that is an appropriate policy to practice with our employees. So we're bringing to you in first reading the recommendation that we allow employees who have stepchildren residing in their house to bring those students to our school division as well as a benefit to our employees. And my recommendation then is to move this revision of policy into second reading, and we'll bring it back to you next month.
Do I have a motion to move the first reading to a second reading of this particular section of the policy manual?
I have a question. Do we need to define residing full-time or put in full-time?
I thought about that, but I thought I'd leave it as residing, because I know that sometimes a child may be with somebody, say, five or six nights a week, but maybe with other parent a night a week. So, you know, I just wanted to put residing with, so it clearly wasn't somebody where the child lives two counties away with another parent and never lives in the house of the employee. So, but we're looking for them residing in that house with the employee. I was afraid if we got too technical, it might, could create issues for employees, but we'd be happy to make a change to it.
Do I have a motion to move from the first reading to the second reading?
Oh, a motion to remove from the first reading to the second reading this change to the policy manual.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Are there any questions or comments? All right, thank you. Ms. McDowell, could you call for a vote, please?
Ms. Rollins?
Aye.
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Ms. Sidner?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Mr. Cass?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
The motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
And next up, consideration of approval of first reading and move to second reading Change to Policy Manual, Section 5-8, Office of the Division Superintendent, with the reading file enclosed.
Yes, I realize that this year, as of July 1, was the year that we are officially implementing the new evaluation tool for division superintendents that aligns with the tool that we used that was implemented last year with our building administrators, and then the previous year with our teachers as part of the changes the state has made to the entire evaluation procedure that needed to be done because they did receive funding from the federal government. You may remember, it seems like a long time ago, but five years ago when they received the stimulus funding as part of the ARA Act, the state had to make changes to its evaluation policy. So this revision to policy realigns the text about my evaluation with the uniformed performance standards and evaluation criteria that the state has now put out for superintendents. So it's a revision to support that. So with that, I'm recommending that we move that revision of policy into second reading, and we'll bring it back to you for a vote next month.
Is superintendent a word on the, under discussion, the second line, standards and evaluation criteria?
Oh, that's a misspelling. Thank you. A typo. I didn't know if it was, I mean, I... Mm-mm.
Is that a word or not?
Do I have a motion to move from the first reading to the second reading the change in Policy Manual, Section 5-8?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any questions there or comments about the change? I thought I'd learned a new word also.
We could make it a new word. That would be okay.
Moral of superintendent? Superintendent?
Things.
Doctor Parrish, did you say we received stimulus funds?
Yeah, back in, when the recession first hit, the states received a large portion of stimulus funding from the federal government, but that came with requirements about evaluations and that you had to have a percentage of your teacher and then principal and then superintendent evaluations aligned with student achievement. So that was one of them. There were a couple of other strings attached to it, but that's what this one is actually connected to. And I will say that stimulus money was of great assistance during that very challenging time, which is why the state took that funding and agreed to the strings.
Yeah, exactly. They put us in a recession where we're dire straits for money and dangle money out in front of us and say, you can have it if you do, you know, jump through these hoops for us. So while I have a very, very sore spot with their manipulation in that manner, I will say that the new evaluation tool, I believe everybody thought was much better than what we had in the past. And so with that being said, anybody else have a question, comment? Ms. McDowell, could you call for a vote, please?
Ms. Rollins?
Aye.
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Ms. Sidner?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Mr. Cass?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
The motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. Next up, consideration of authorization for superintendent to sign contract for Bon Secours Sports Medicine. There was a reading file there as well.
Yes, we have a contract with Bon Secours. They provide our athletic trainer at the school, as well as they do also provide a physician during football season at our home games. Our athletic trainer works with all of our athletic teams throughout the course of the year. She is licensed, and she does work through Bon Secours. We also ensured that in that contract that there is mention of the fact that we do have a student trainer program. The Bon Secours follows all of the regulations that are put forth through the various licensing agencies in terms of what our students are allowed to do and not allowed to do. Needless to say, over the years, a lot has changed in that area. We were able to get this contract actually because we were able to latch on to a contract that another school division has, so that helps us to bring the cost down. So this, the annual cost of the contract is $25,000, and we're asking for approval to authorize for me to sign that contract with Bon Secours. We've used them for a number of years and have been very happy with their services. And at the football game on Friday night, I have to say that I saw our athletic trainer working on our football players and the physician also working on the football players, so I can say that they are certainly fulfilling their contract.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the authorization for the superintendent to sign contract with Bon Secours?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions there?
I have a question.
Okay.
You said that the physician is for the home games only?
Yeah, I think he's just on call, because other schools then have at their home games. Yes.
I see. That cover both, the visitor and the home.
Because that's what they'll, and many of the other school divisions use Bon Secours. York County does, so in those games, you're dealing with Bon Secours. So as well, I suspect there are some other divisions on the Peninsula, but I know for a fact that York County does.
So with our home game?
Yes.
The physician would tend to any...
Yeah, either side.
Injury on either side.
Right, right.
And if I'm not mistaken, also open to all sports once a week, I believe, is a free, what do they call it, sports injury clinic where he comes out, and if you have any kind of an injury related to sports, you can go see him, and he'll at least, he'll give you a more thorough evaluation and determine whether or not you need to seek better medical or more medical attention and just sideline and stuff. Okay. Anything else? Thank you. Ms. McDowell, could you call for a vote, please?
Ms. Rollins?
Aye.
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Ms. Sidner?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Mr. Cass?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
The motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. And last up, consideration of approval of proclamation for National School Lunch Week, which is enclosed. And I do have a proclamation here for National School Lunch Week, October 13 through 17. And, you know, the research has shown students who eat school meals perform their best academically. We all know that, and they've been offering meals for over 60 years. And they do, our food services personnel and those who work with food services personnel do a great job, given the restraints within which they have to work these days. So with that, do I have a motion to, for, consider or approve October 13 through 17 National School Lunch Week?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Questions or comments?
I wonder how they figured out that students who eat school meals perform their best academically.
Somebody out there has probably done some research.
Somebody need a dissertation.
Yes, it may have been a dissertation.
Yeah.
I can say it was not mine, however.
Yep. Well, I don't perform well without lunch.
Well, that doesn't say lunch. That says school lunch. You gotta eat the school lunch to do your best academic.
I'll come and eat school lunch and tell you how I do.
I'll have the peanut butter and jelly from home, which is school lunch.
I think there is something physiologically involved with digestion and brain activity. I don't know. I'm no medical doctor. I do know, however, that since the implementation of the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act, that 123 million in Virginia has gone down some. But hats off to the food services personnel, honestly. You guys are working miracles, and I appreciate your work, so thank you very much.
I'll roger that. I'd say it would be a little short, but doesn't recognize these staff and the hard work that they actually do.
Absolutely. And everything they've done to promote it and get it out there, and just, you guys do a fine job. Thank you. So, Ms. McDowell, for the last time, I know sadly, I'm going to ask you to call for a vote.
Ms. Rollins?
Aye.
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Ms. Sidner?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Mr. Cass?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
The motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you very much. Do we have any public comment tonight?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay, so we'll go into communications, and Dr. Parrish, would you like to kick us off?
Yeah, I just want to thank everybody, our building administrators, our principals who are here, teachers, and all the staff in our schools. We really had just a great school opening this year. Back in some of the schools today, and everybody's just busy learning and lots of smiles, so I thank everybody. It takes a lot of work behind the scenes to make it a great school opening, so thanks to everyone who did that work. And just a reminder, too, to families that we've had, the elementary school had their back-to-school night last week, but the other three schools still have those nights coming up. And I encourage parents and other relatives to come to those and learn a little bit more about what their students or their children will be experiencing in school. I want to echo the good news that Mr. Bowen announced today, that we will not have budget reductions this current school year for fiscal year 15. So that was very good news. Rarely, as we well know, do we get good news out of Richmond. But I saw Senator Norman at a meeting this morning, and I've already started working on fiscal year 16. So we'll hope that we can get good news as we move into the next round of budgeting. I do want to remind everybody that we have Child Find Thursday on the 18th. That's this Thursday here in Pecoson at Trinity Church, and we there encourage our community members to bring your very young children, from infants up to age five, because we're able to do some work with them in assessing them and seeing if we need to provide any services at that very young age. And also know that it is not just for Pecoson residents. This is for anybody who would like to bring their young ones to us, and the students do have a bit of fun while they're with us, too. So hopefully, we'll have a good turnout for that event, too. And a big thank you to Dr. Feltman and her staff, because they worked very hard to make that event happen, and it does run all day and into the evening. And finally, I would like to thank everybody for their hard work. You certainly saw some success in our student achievements today, and as Dr. Colley said, we'll be talking about that more in the work session. But with that success also comes some challenges, and we've already hit the ground running, and we'll continue to do all we can to make sure we get all of our students across those many objectives and targets that we have, both from the state and the federal government. Those are my comments for tonight.
Thank you, ma'am. Sophie?
So we have lots of activity going on in our four schools. The Pecoson Primary School plans to celebrate Constitution Day tomorrow by gathering around the flag and talking about the Constitution and reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. and reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. After the pledge, the students will listen to Jessica Sidner, a Pecosin High School band member, play the National Anthem. The teachers are going to have follow-up activities planned in the classroom for the remainder of the day. Last week, the first-grade students attended the Campfire and Home Fire School Day Celebration at the Pecosin Museum. They learned about life in the past, and they listened to stories about life in Pecosin during the Civil War era. At the elementary school, they just had their open house on September eleventh. They said many parents attended, and they were happy about that. Tomorrow, the elementary school is celebrating Constitution Day as well and the anniversary of our National Anthem. They'll begin the morning by singing the Star-Spangled Banner, and they'll all be wearing red, white, and blue to support it. At the middle school, they have the back-to-school night Thursday, or they will have the back-to-school night Thursday, September eighteenth, six to seven-thirty. The evening starts in the gym at six. The back-to-school dance is Friday, September nineteenth, from six-thirty to nine. And Mr. Pirelli asked that all parents drop off their, drop off and pick up their children at the Popular Street, Popular Street entrance. And they're to look for information to come home on Thursday about their Fall Magazine subscription fundraiser. At the high school, they've, so far, they've had the Student to Student Program, held a well-attended freshman orientation as well as a new student orientation. The high school kids have many special friends volunteering to go to the primary school to work with the younger kids. The Virginia Wildlife Magazine wrote an article named "P is for Pollinators" showcasing the Pecosin High School Butterfly Garden. Both teachers and students were quoted in this article, or interviewed for this article. A college fair will be held October twenty-ninth at the Hampton Roads Convention Center for all students. The guidance counselors are working with individual classes to publish, publicize and encourage all students to attend. Most of the clubs at PHS have started meeting and have started in their work that they will do throughout the school year. Our drama club has held auditions for their one act play already. Our teams are doing great. The football team's currently two and oh. The volleyball team is three to one. Field hockey team is four to one. Golf team is ninth after seven matches. And the competition cheer team placed first in the first, first in the first of four Bay Rivers competitions. The cross-country is preparing for their Bay Rivers meets. And Alexander Hanna finished first in the Mid-Atlantic region in the Cressy National Qualifier Sailing Race. He will be traveling to Washington State on October thirty-first to compete for the national championship. That's all I have.
Fill some out, please. Very well done. Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Rollins?
I want to wish Pat all the best as you enter the next stage of your life. You were very helpful to me, especially last year when I got that big packet of stuff, and I called and said, whoa. And you, you helped considerably. Thank you. You will be missed.
Thank you very much.
You definitely will be missed. Enjoy every time.
Thank you. I hope so.
Mr. Hux?
Thank you, Dr. Carr. No comment tonight.
And Ms. Whitaker?
I do have a few things to mention. The Pecosin Seafood Festival kickoff event, the Five K Run Two-Mile Walk, is held Saturday, October fourth. This benefits the Pecosin Education Foundation. Sponsors are needed. The deadline for sponsors to have your logo on the T-shirt is actually tomorrow, but they'll take sponsors after that point. Race registration fee is $25 in advance or $30 on the day of the race, and you meet at the high school, and that's where the race kicks off. It is brought to you by the Pecosin Education Foundation and Kiwanis Club of Pecosin. You can also go to, in addition to P E F V A dot org to get the registration information, you can go to pecosinseafoodfestival.com and then select the Kickoff Events tab, and it's, it's, there's a link down there as well. I really encourage everybody to get out and do this. It supports the schools. It supports healthy lifestyle. It's fun to do. I did it last year. You meet a lot of people. Unfortunately, my, my little sidekick, my son ditched me as we went past our house. I'm trying to get him to commit this year and maybe not ditch me this time, but that's okay. I met some nice people. In addition, there is also something that probably a lot of people are aware of, but I was not. Amazon dot com allows you to register your account with a charity, and the charity will get a portion of the proceeds, a little percentage of what you purchase. It's W W W dot smile dot Amazon dot com. I went on there today and just did a search for Pecosin. And while I'm sure, I'd love everybody to sign up for Pecosin Education Foundation, there are other really good Pecosin charities out there, so I'm not going to just say you have to do Pecosin Education Foundation. But if you do purchase from Amazon dot com, it's really great to see that some of your money does go back to the charity of your choice. And Pat, thank you. We'll miss you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Whitaker. Ms. Sidner?
Ah, yes, I'd like to thank Pat for all her hard work and dedication. She's been on, working with me for five out of my six years, so it'll be quite different, so, but I wish you all the best.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Melton?
I guess I'm going to jump on the Pat bandwagon, and I want to wish you a great retirement and not a great requirement. Our little inside joke. I do want to thank all the, the teachers, the assistant teachers, administrators, and the parents. Good SOL test scores just don't happen. A lot of practice, a lot of hard work, and with intention and planning, and I want to thank all those involved with that. We also have a Special Ed Advisor Committee meeting coming on Thursday, October ninth, at six PM at the Pecosin Elementary School. It's going to be the I'm Determined Project. And the actual students are going to show you how they participate in their own academic future, working with some of their IEPs and goal setting. So that is the topic of the evening. And lastly, I'd like to thank Chief Bowen and our, our police force for all the work that they do to keep our schools safe and for the, the practicing and, and things they've done to plan to do that. I believe they had a practice session maybe a couple evenings right after our last school board meeting. So I do want to send them a shout-out as well for all that they do for our city schools. And that should be it.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Cass?
Thank you, Pat. I'm still upset.
You don't, sir? Okay, great. Short and sweet. Thanks again to Mr. Bumbaw for the presentation tonight. You think about it, they've been in school two weeks, and they can come in a form like that. A lot of talent with the students, but also a lot of, of good leadership under his direction, so thank you there to the course. Band is right on target at the high school football game the other night. They did a great job, of course, the football team as well. And my daughter this year's decided to ditch cheerleading and do field hockey, so I've started going to field hockey games. If you've never been to one, you should, you should come out to a field hockey game. First of all, I don't know how they sprint for twenty-five minutes straight up and down the football field, then get a ten-minute break and come back and do it for twenty-five more minutes, but it's, it's, it's fast-paced, it's exciting. And while I encourage everybody to support all of the sports programs we have, come out to a field hockey game sometime. I think you'll be impressed. And with that, Ms. McDowell, thank you very much for, for being there. Anytime I need to call, text, whatever. You're flexible, and you're thorough, and you're just right on top of everything, and we truly miss you quite a bit.
Thank you very much.
Quite a bit. So thank you for your work. Do we have any material for board review?
We do not.
And with that, we will adjourn to the work session.